I'm sorry, Dr. Bostic, you're muted.
Okay, let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord God, as again and another time we come before your presence in the humblest manner that we know how. First, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and we thank you for all your many blessings. Father, we ask you to look down now upon this planning commission, Lord, and the people that we have online and video and the phone. And Lord, just be with us, help us to work together in agreement, Lord, that we may do those things that are beneficial to the people of Jasper County. And Lord, most of all, Lord, let it be. Let, 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 let you be pleased with our service. Father, we just thank you for all your many blessings, in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Our pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
State.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you, Dr. Bostic. Can we have the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Jenkins, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, this is Deborah Butler.
Okay, I did note one item in the agenda that needs to be changed. It's just a typo, but the tax map number zero eighty-one, zero, 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 four, zero, zero, eight, it's supposed to be zero, eight, zero.
Got it. You're right.
There's no other discussion? A call for remote, a call for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of the minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two workshop. Can I hear a motion?
I make a motion. And I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. December thirteenth, the minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular scheduled meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of the minutes from January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to old business zoning map amendment, concept and plan approval. Planning Development District, Bailey Park, tax map number zero eighty-one dash zero, zero, dash zero, four, dash, zero, zero, seven, and zero eighty-one, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, eight, zero.
The applicant K and R Development LLC has requested a planned development district zoning designation for mixed use development, which will be known as Bailey Park PDD. The project site consists of two parcels. Um, there's track A, which is six point six, three acres, and track B, which is twenty acres. Track A is zone community commercial, while track B is zoned residential. The properties are located along Highway one seventy, approximately two miles east of the intersection of Highway four sixty-two, and has frontage along Old Bailey Road. Both properties are vacant, and they've never been developed. The planning commission reviewed this application in May two thousand and twenty-two and forwarded a recommendation of approval to county council to have the property zoned planned development district. The applicant has revised the PDD document to remove all commercial uses and designate both parcels as residential. The proposed density has been decreased significantly to, um, seven and a half units per acre. The traffic study was revised, and it was based on residential uses only at twelve units per acre. Uh, because this is a major change, it requires another review and recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with Article three, two, five of the Jasper County zoning ordinance. Um. According to the two thousand and eighteen Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area's rural conservation, which seeks to protect and promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists today outside of the municipalities. In these areas, new development should be thoughtfully placed within the existing landscape. The land use chapter of the Comprehensive Plan recommends guidance growth and new development in or around the municipalities where infrastructure and services are available to serve new growth. While this project site is not near municipality, it is located in an area where infrastructure and services are available to serve the site. And it's also, um, a lot of commercial located nearby here. And on the existing land use map of the Comprehensive Plan, it shows the existing land uses. As commercial, it's a mix. It's also residential when, um, some vacant properties as well. To the north of the property is the Center Point PDD, and it's, um, it's own PDD, and it's located in Jasper County. To the south, Old Bailey Road, it, they're single family residential, it's zoned residential, what's in Jasper County. And also Beaufort County is across the street. To the west is primarily vacant land, Beaufort Jasper Comprehensive Health and Single Family Residential. Uh, community and its own community, commercial and residential, and located in Jasper County. Uh, to the east is vacant property, community, commercial and residential located in Jasper County. One of the properties is accessed by North Oakity Highway, which is a four-lane state maintained highway classified as an arterial road. The other property has direct access to Old Bailey Road, which is a two-lane state maintained road classified as a local road. The revised Bailey Park PDD concept plan illustrates the proposed uses, the general layout and access points. The revisions to the Bailey Park PDD changes track A, um, was changed from mixed use commercial to residential uses only. This eliminates sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial uses, and it adds no more than seven and a half units per acre, which may be in the form of apartments, townhomes, or single-family detached houses. Track B's been changed from twelve units per acre. Um, originally, when it came to you, it's two hundred and thirty-three units. Um, that's been changed to seven and a half units per acre. Based on the upland acres, the total residential density for both track A and B is gonna come out to approximately a hundred and eighty-seven units. Uh, the traffic study was revised. It was based on three hundred townhouses with no commercial. Uh, the traffic study compared to the first traffic study reduces the total daily trips from four thousand one hundred and eighty-six trips to a total of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight total daily trips. The AM peak hour trips were reduced from a hundred and sixty-eight trips to a hundred and sixteen trips, while the PM peak hour trips were reduced from three hundred and seventy-four trips to a hundred and fifty trips. With the, um, reduction of the overall density, the traffic count will be further reduced by thirty-three percent. Um, which is, uh, using the same methodology that's in, that the traffic engineers used. It's gonna come to about approximately seventy-eight trips, um, for AM peak hours and a hundred trips for PM peak hours. If you could excuse me just for a moment, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Dunham, uh, Mr. Pinkney's on the phone, and he's asking me to tell you to let him in the meeting.
He hasn't posted yet.
He hasn't? Okay. Hold on just a minute, y'all. I'm.
Is the applicant here? To address the committee?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
The applicant is with us. Yeah.
Um, would you like to address us?
Um, yes, thank you for reviewing this again. I thought Ms. Wagner did a really fine job in presenting what we have done. We took the recommendations of staff and council and went back to the drawing board and reduced our density, reduced our concept plan, wanting to try and find a happy medium with the, with the neighbors and obviously the needs of the developer. And we think we found it. We think we found that sweet spot. So I'm just asking that you look at the overall reduction and give it your seal of approval, so we can go back to council and get our PDD approval.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start with Mr. R. If you wouldn't mind, if you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I had a couple of questions. Ms. Toski, maybe you can help me understand, and that's starting with the traffic study. On page one is an, there's an executive summary, and about two-thirds of the way down, uh, it says, while these recommendations may not fully mitigate congestion during peak hours, the following additional improvements should be considered if queues are excessive. Um, have you located that sentence with me, Ms. Husky?
Yes, sir, I have.
Is that something that you as developers will do? Or is this just a general comment that's gonna fall by the wayside somewhere?
Typically, it's been my experience that when the department, uh, well, when the traffic studies offer up mitigation ideas, the Department of Transportation typically follows those and will more than likely require us to do that. We had, this was a requirement even in the original traffic. I don't wanna say requirement, but it was a suggestion in the original traffic study. So everything that we have so far preliminarily designed does take this into consideration and does not allow a left turn onto one seventy out of the main development. And we have no problem abiding by this. Actually, I think it's a safer alternative to make egress onto one seventy a right turn only. And then if you need to come out and go to a left turn, then you would exit from the rear of the development onto Bailey Road, go out to one of the stop signs, which we've offered and have put forth a plan to the Department of Transportation to help with the cost of a stoplight if needed right there.
Okay, has, has this traffic study addressed the increased traffic on Bailey Road, which is just, I think, a two-lane road?
It did, yes. It did take it into consideration.
Okay, uh, then I went on to, and bear with me, uh, on page twenty-nine conclusions and recommendations. I, I guess overall, my concern is that when I, when I see, you know, the statistics that, that the traffic report uses, the growth rate used in this study was four percent. Now, I'm not a, a PhD student in statistics. I've been living in this area for a little over four years, and traffic along one seventy has increased a heck of a lot more than four percent. I don't know where some of that comes from, but, uh, it used to be I could turn out of my neighborhood, uh, which is by the Tide Watch emergency facility, go all the way down to two seventy-eight, and maybe it would take two or three minutes. Now, more often than not, traffic is backed up all, almost all the way to that intersection. Um, it, it just doesn't seem as though it's a realistic statistic. And, you know, one of my major concerns and my belly wag on a lot of these is, you know, what can we do so people aren't killed? And I know I'm just, you know, generalizing, but what do we do to prevent accidents, people coming out of this road onto one seventy? I know there are some recommendations. Uh, how do we make those more than recommendations?
So part, part of the requirement is, um, the next, the next L and D cell lane must be installed at the main entrance. I'm sorry, I have a cat that wants to join the meeting. Um, so we will have the, the D cell lanes and the XL lanes coming out and into the community. And I grew up here. My family's been here generations, so I've seen all of the growth from as far back as you can remember. And one of the things that actually helped in, with traffic and that, and the Highway one seventy corridor is the same thing that happened to two seventy-eight back in the eighties and the early nineties going onto Hilton Head. It used to be a thoroughfare. It used to be a free-for-all speeding sixty-five miles an hour from what we now know as Bluffton all the way onto Hilton Head. And with very conscientious development and some forethought, having these developments has a tendency to slow down the traffic. When you have these developments and their entrances and their exits on major highways, people tend to slow down naturally. They don't have a choice. I made that commute from Beaufort to Bluffton for about a year as we were building our house, and I know the nightmare that is Highway one seventy. In my conversations with the Department of Transportation, they have reiterated whether this development comes online or any more development comes online by the year two thousand and twenty-seven, there's going to be a problem just simply from development in Beaufort and surrounding areas that utilize the common corridor of one seventy. So I'm of a little different train of thought in that when we develop these parcels, because growth is inevitable. If we do it well, and we, and we have thoughtful planning as to how it's done, it's going to naturally slow the traffic down. And perhaps, perhaps some of the people who live in Beaufort and commute to Hilton Head for work every day look at this development as a place to live, and now you've alleviated that many people from traveling the entire route of one seventy. Their commute is cut in half. Um, so maybe the traffic, as we develop these areas that are in between these long-haul drives, we naturally can deter these speedways of, of traffic hazards and concerns. You know, I'm, I come from an area that did not experience a lot of development and growth for a long time, and I can certainly posture myself arguing pro-development and anti-development. I love the Low Country. It's been my home for eons. But at the same time, you know, I've watched the growth over the years, and I have watched, I've watched it done poorly in some areas and done very well in others. And as a developer, when Ms. Wagner came back to me and she said, hey, Jen, um, this is too much density. We need you to go back to the drawing board and lower your density, lower your traffic counts. Help us, you know, with this more manageable growth. It, I, you know, if you do that across the board with Jasper County, you're not going to see what Beaufort County saw in the nineties with that explosive growth in the Bluffton corridor where it was just crazy, and, and people weren't paying attention to the roadways and the speeds. Um, you know, you can't do sixty-five and seventy-five miles an hour when you're surrounded by growth. You just can't do it. And naturally, when people slow down, accidents tend to not occur. Um, I've read the comments on social media. I know what people are saying about traffic. But, you know, I've lost dear friends in, in traffic accidents that happened on Snake Road in nineteen seventy-eight or Backroads to Tillman in nineteen eighty-five, or, or whatever, four sixty-two, where there is no growth. There is no development or was none, and people drove carelessly. Um, so again, I, like I said, I sometimes think outside of the box, and I tend to think growth has a tendency to slow traffic down, which decreases the number of accidents along a corridor like one seventy.
Okay, when do you think there will be plans or prints available for review that show deceleration lane, a deceleration lane and all, and ingress and egress for this development?
That will be part of the submission package that we give to Ms. Wagner for major subdivision approval. I will tell you that we have a jumpstart with our engineer. Um, we actually had already designed for the prior approval with the higher density. So we are going back and we are, um, amending that design, and we do show an XL and D selling. But Ms. Wagner and staff will have fully engineered drawings, DOT approvals. Um, all of that will show when we go to seek that final master plan approval.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh, I've got two other, two other questions, comments, concerns, if you'll bear with me. Uh, the information I has, that I have, uh, it looks as though there'll be one point two five acres that'll be devoted for active, open space for the community. Is that a correct number on my part?
That actually is a minimum number. With the reduction in density, we probably will have a few more open spaces than we originally thought. So yes, you will see a minimum of one point two five acres.
I mean, I would hope so. If, if this development is gonna attract, you know, families and whatever, you know, a piece of land two hundred by two hundred or three hundred by three hundred isn't a lot of open space for a hundred eighty-seven families. And, um, it, it seems excessively small from, from where I sit.
You know, so that calculation was what is required in the, if I'm not mistaken, that's the minimum requirement in the PDD document. But yes, yeah, we, so we designed it not knowing exactly what our final density would be. But anywhere that we do not have a residential pad or home or, or unit, we would have no problem dedicating that for open space, absolutely. And it's, it's a selling feature. I mean, people wanna move into an area where they have a place to go outside and put their feet in the grass. So absolutely.
Okay, and here, and here's just a, a common question, and it may be, and it may come from left field. Uh, but as I look at this whole area, and I look at, at so many other developers that have come before us, and I see letters from Water, Sewer, Electric, and all the utilities that say they're capable of providing service to all of these developments. Uh, fire, ambulance, we hope are available. Realistically, the medical community is not capable of supporting all of, all of this additional growth. But that's, that's a different, that's a horse of another color. Um, what about the educational system? Has anyone, as a developer, do you even look at the capability of the county to take an influx of maybe another seventy-five students and bring them into the educational system?
We do. Uh, we look at the demographics that are most likely to purchase the product that we're going to put there. And again, I'm going to defer to Bluffton back in the eighties and early nineties as Sun City made its debut, and I was in a, I was an original agent in Sun City, so I, I know the value that it brought um, to the area. But as we can increase that tax base with a, a population that doesn't necessarily need the school system, but the tax revenue that they bring in to help support those services for when that growth does come. The demographic right now for Jasper County is not young families, and our buyers are not necessarily young families. But having said that, I have seen tremendous improvements in the Jasper County school system. And it would not surprise me if in the next three to five years, you did not see the Jasper County school systems just skyrocket. Uh, we're, we're seeing it left and right as developers, and I think you will get to a point where there will be developers who come in, and they are family-focused in their communities. This product is probably going to appeal more to the retiree. Right now, we are seeing the demographics, about seventy percent of our purchasing market is, is in that retiree, um, age.
Okay, thank you very much for bearing with me. Uh, Mr. Wade, I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Butler, you have any questions or comments? You're, you're muted, ma'am.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have, uh, going back to the traffic study, um, and this is actually on page twenty, nineteen and twenty, um, looking at um, LOS thresholds for unsignaled in, um, intersection. If I'm reading this correctly, it says, um, South Carolina one seventy at Old Bailey Road West, northbound lane will fall at an LOS of E, which is toward the top of the, um, or I guess I would consider that to be the top. Um, when you, when, you, when you look at how it defines those, that is a fairly significant delay in the amount of people in that lane are gonna have a significant delay, is what I understand, reading that. And, um, as you look through that chart, you can see that, that there are, there is another, um, on Old Bailey Road East, there's also a delay, a significant delay, and that's now. Then if you look at the projection, which I agree, um, with the earlier comments, using a four percent growth by two thousand and twenty-seven, um, that, those, um, delays have gotten significantly worse um, for people that are living there. Uh, that's a significant delay in being able to move through the traffic, and I appreciate every, your, all of your earlier explanations about how this is gonna slow traffic down, but, um, this is going to be traffic at a standstill, is what I'm understanding from looking at this.
I'm, obviously, I'm not a traffic engineer, but when I spoke with the, um, with ACOM who performed this study, as it stands right now, with what is currently approved on, for the zoning of this lot with the commercial, um, usages and, and whatnot, it was an F all the way across the board. If someone were to come in and buy this property from me and develop it with what it currently is allowed to be developed with, it would be probably a total nightmare traffic-wise. The other thing, and so they were in favor of this reduction in density. They preferred this as opposed to the F. But the other thing they pointed out to me was this is unsignaled.
Right.
If it, if and when, and they, they were very specific, because they said when, it's not a matter of if. They're going to have to do some major mitigation by two thousand and twenty-seven for the entire Highway one seventy corridor. They know that. The Department of Transportation is already working on a plan to alleviate that congestion. Um, we aren't privy to it. They haven't told us what it is. But I do believe that it will involve signalizing the intersection at Old Bailey and one seventy, which would greatly improve that, um, the level of service PM that you're seeing now. But not, not knowing what the DOT has in plan, you know, has in store for that, I can't speak to it. I can just tell you, I have been told by the Department of Transportation representative and the ACOM representative that there is a mitigation plan for the entire one seventy corridor with emphasis right where we're talking about between, you know, what I call the four sixty-two cutoff to the bridges.
Okay, um, so in summary, at the present time, um, there's gonna be, there will be significant delays based on the traffic study that you presented to us, right?
That is correct, in the evening hours.
Right, okay. Um, Lisa, I appreciate the information that was sent us, um, right before the meeting, um, which is not something I've seen before, and, um, this is information from people who actually live in the area, correct?
Some.
I didn't have time really to really, other than just.
Some are from out of state, New Jersey, Florida, um, North Carolina. Cause I think there's only about a hundred and fifty property owners down there. Um, so.
These people are property owners?
Not all of them, just some of them. Um, there's people from Bluffton, and, um, there are some property owners. And I was gonna speak to that. I just had, was helping Mr. Pinkney at the time, so, um, because we did receive a public, um, comment letter at ten minutes after five from the Coastal Conservation League, and, um, and then, um, I wanted to let y'all know, I sent out notices to everybody that was within fifteen hundred feet, including the Beaufort County side. Um, there, everybody that got a notice during public here and got another. There, everybody that got a notice during public here and got another notice. I invited them to submit written comments for this meeting. I did not receive any from those notices I sent out.
If you received this, what you sent us?
Was, well, that was actually, that's based on the original plan, and it was presented to county council in September 2022.
Okay, so Lisa, the complaints of the of the folks that were opposed to this project, they wanted to leave the zoning as is currently, is that correct? And not make a change for PDD? And what would be the implications of that if we don't change it? What what does it do? It reduces the density further? Is that what?
Yes, it does. It does.
Not the current plan, but what?
Right, the by right zoning, yes. Well, I don't know, because it does allow, so if you think a single family residential, it does, but it does allow townhouses as a conditional use, and the density for that is where the original numbers came from, the 233 units, basically was based on the density. I think it's 10,000 square feet per unit for townhouses is
No, it's two, so
No, that's right. It's 2,000 square feet per unit like for townhouse development. So that really was what the applicant wanted to do in the beginning. But the county kind of pushed back and said, no, you have 25 acres total. We want a planned development district because there is a lot of traffic associated with that. So that's how it started and and, you know, based on just a very conceptual plan of how they determine those numbers in the beginning.
Okay, and so could you explain to me why this, why this is coming back to us? The county refused to approve the original project? Is that it? The county council?
No, they didn't refuse to do the original project. It just received so much. There was a lot of comments set to public here, and the county council actually kept putting that on hold. And we had a workshop at the council. Then the holidays came and so at that point, after the public hearing, Ms. Toski did come back with a plan to remove all the commercial uses. So but because it's a major change, it has to come back here. There will be another public hearing scheduled when it goes back to county council at the second reading that just got tabled, second reading of the council meeting, it was tabled.
Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've lost my visual for whatever reason. I'm sorry.
I can see you too.
You can see me? I can't see anybody.
Yes, I can see you. Do you have a slider over your your peephole of your?
No, something popped up on my computer. I I'm not sure. Anyway, as long as you can hear me and see me.
Yes.
So the the change in plan was a result of the intervention by the local folks that were that live in the area? Is that is that what you're saying?
Well, I think Ms. Toski was sensitive to some of their opposition and thought that maybe it would be real helpful if she removed all of the commercial uses, which did reduce the traffic quite a bit. And then, you know, since the workshop, just kind of looking at some of our other PDDs and working with her, we thought, you know, it would be best if we could reduce it even more, because the conversion rate, when you removed a commercial, the way it was originally written, the conversion rate would have been 12 units per acre still. Did I say that right, Jennifer?
Yes, and I also want to add, because I think that, you know, while I'm sensitive to the neighbors and what they are asking, I think it's getting lost in their understanding of what is currently approved as a by right use. These are two separate parcels, and as they stand today, someone could develop 65,000 square feet roughly of commercial space on the northern 6.68 acres, which would only have access through 170. And that would be something that doesn't require approvals from from planning commission or county council. That would be someone submitting their commercial plans and staff approving them based on the allowed uses. And then that left the 20 acres on the south piece. That could be a mobile home park under as a by right use. It could be, I believe it could hold up to maybe 50 or or 55 single family homes. Townhomes up to a 2,000 square foot lot capacity, which is where we got the 225. So the, and the only ingress and egress to the south piece would be off of Bailey Road, which would create a tremendous traffic burden on Bailey Road. They are independent parcels as they stand today. So taking the independent parcel densities for commercial and residential and combining the two parcels into one large parcel so that ingress and egress could be shared across the parcels to 170, alleviating some congestion on Bailey Road was was the the goal of what we were doing. When I realized that by combining them, we triggered that clause in the zoning ordinance that said if your property is in excess of 25 acres, the county has the right to ask you to be a PDD. So these original densities were not as a result of us asking to be a PDD and coming up with these numbers as a result. It was based on the existing by right uses. And when we went before, when we went before county council, and you know, there is right now public concern with development in Jasper County, it it became clear to me that in order to appease the neighbors, because I have several emails and social media comments from people saying, whatever you do, don't put a mobile home park there. I don't want a mobile home park next to me. Well, if I can't do a mobile home park, which is a by right use, the next logical thing would be a single family product. But I have to weigh it as as a developer, is it more beneficial to do the mobile home park? Or give up density and do the single family homes and townhomes? So listening to the feedback, we went back to the drawing board and said, okay, do we really want to develop 65,000 square feet of commercial? And the answer was, well, no, because it seems that the majority of our traffic concerns and trip generations came from the commercial development. So by, we're residential builders. So by eliminating the commercial altogether, that left us with a density of about 225 residential units that we could put there. When I met with Ms. Wagner, again, that's when she said, Jen, you're going to have to take this even lower. So we look at it as a really good compromise in that we're giving up density that we have a by right ability to develop. And we're doing it to be good neighbors, because we can make our numbers work. You know, development is not always about greed. And that gets, developers get compared to the big greedy people all the time. But we're not. We're we're in it to do something that's needed in the community, which is an affordable housing product to develop a piece of property that I can control. If it gets out of my control and goes to another developer, they may come in and do 65,000 square feet of commercial and a and a mobile home park. And and the neighbors would not have any input in that, because they wouldn't have to come before council for a PDD. So that's, that kind of started this whole conversation and this process of asking for the PDD was more at the county's request of you're over 25 acres. And and we're good with it. I mean, no, I would love to have more density. I I would love to be able to do the original plan. But on the flip side, I'm okay doing it this way, too. There's still good product. There's still good profit to be made. And it's what the neighbors, I think, would like to see more so than what is allowed there.
I have another question regarding, and this again, was a comment that I saw in the letter that was sent to us. There's concern regarding runoff or any kind of activity that would damage the Ok, is it the Okati River? Did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so they're concerned because it is one of the last pristine waters. And I don't know that for a fact. I'm telling you what I read, that they're concerned about protecting the environment and that this development will contribute to destroying that beautiful environment.
They, and they should be. The Okati River, I learned to water ski in it. I'm very familiar with it. The what I think, and I don't tell doctors how to do their job, so I'm certainly not going to, you know, I'm not going to speculate on how to tell engineers to do their jobs. But the way it was explained to me by Carolina Engineering and a few other civil engineers who have worked on this project is, Jen, by our design standards, we have to either maintain the status quo in a community, or we have to improve the infrastructure and the runoff and the drainage in the area where we're developing. We cannot go in and and create problems. So knowing Bailey Road, the way that I do, there are issues with drainage and runoff there right now, and it wasn't caused by any individual in particular. It's been poor management of land in that area. There are a couple of large tracks that are not maintained, and they're causing the ditches in that area to back up and cause flooding. Again, it's private property. You can't force someone to go in and maintain their property. What we have looked at with regard to our engineering for this site will improve the drainage that is in question there and the backup that some of the neighbors have experienced from other development on that area or property owners just simply not maintaining the drainage ditches and and canals and things that are there. But the engineer best explained it to me. He said, we cannot worsen an area. We either have to design as to maintain what it is or make it better. And those are their, those are their engineering guidelines.
Okay, and will your runoff go to the Okati River off of that property? Is that what you're saying?
No, it does not. My understanding is it goes into, I'm going to use the wrong words because I'm not an engineer, but basically there's a drainage basin that diverts it back into whatever is under in the the easements along 170 that pushes it back towards the storage tanks that Beaufort Jasper maintains. And somehow or another, it gets recycled or whatever it happened. It goes into these big storage holding tanks somewhere underneath the roadways and the whatever we have to tie back into. And it's a huge part of our cost in developing is tying back into those holding areas that this runoff goes into.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, this design, I've had a couple of comments that our design and our layout will improve drainage along Bailey Road and make it better for the adjoining properties.
Okay. Lisa, is is are there not design standards for mobile home parks? I mean, they could just go open up a mobile home park there. Is that correct?
No, I mean, I think what she was alluding to in the residential zone, which is how it's owned now, mobile homes are allowed, and a mobile home park, you know, is potentially allowed. They would need to come to the planning commission and get a zoning approval for, basically, it's the zoning certificate, and then they would go through an engineered site plan to create a mobile home park.
Okay, so there is a process. You just can't go open up a mobile home. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that.
And I'm sorry, I should have said it's a permitted right. It's a, it's permitted under the current zoning, but yes, it would take planning, just like what we're doing today.
Right. Okay. I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Dr. Bostic, you have any questions or comments?
Maybe it's a comment. I I was looking at the number of units that you reduced from 233 to 187. The amount of daily trips from 4,186 down to 1,998. And it seemed like you've done some things to appease the appease the council as well as your neighbors. So pretty much at this point, this goes back before the county council. Do we, Lisa, do we foresee any other problems with this?
It's going to go back through a public hearing, but I mean, at this point, it does have pretty much all of staff's support.
Okay. All right. So we don't have any other letters or comments or anything else we need to look at?
Well, we do. I did want to share the Coastal Conservation League letter with you. It's a little bit lengthy. So whenever I'm in order, I'll be glad to do that, but I don't want the meeting to close without sharing that with you.
Can you summarize it in about two or three sentences?
Um, I'll do, I just got it at 10 after 5, so I'll just do my very best.
We'll wait on it, Mr. Wade.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Ms. Ferguson, you have any questions or comments?
I don't have, well, maybe it is a question, but the developer seems to acknowledge all of the concerns of the neighbors. However, is there a way that the developer somehow can convince the people who are petitioning against this that all of their concerns have been addressed? There's quite a bit of concerns on this page. I haven't had a chance to really read it, you know, with good comprehension since, because we just got it, but it seems like we can't ignore the fact that these people have have these concerns. And we have to figure out a way to at least give them some sort of comfort level that these things will be addressed or have been addressed.
Ms. Ferguson, if you don't mind if I just speak to that. So again, that that was sent to us back in September of last year. The very first line of the petition tells that it's 233 units, and it says it's 65,000 square feet of commercial. It was done online and not to discredit it at all, but it's not been updated. The person who sent it to me says, well, I did update Facebook page. It was done online and but in reading that, it says they're going to allow even more houses. So I sent myself from this office 44 letters. I have the names and addresses of everybody I've sent it to who live on that whole back circle there, even across in Beaufort County. I took the time to get those addresses. And I went into detail. This was what was asked. This is what's now being proposed. These are the changes. The planning commission is going to review it. I did not get any comments back from any of those 44 letters. The only comments I received was saying, hey, can you send this to the planning commission? But and I did write back to say, well, shouldn't it be updated? I kind of feel like the petition really should be updated. It's it's dated and old. It doesn't reflect the changes at all. And then that's when I received just the copy of, I did update the Facebook page. And in reading it, it says it's going to allow even more residential density. So I think the communication's not exactly what's being proposed and and as far as I know, there's been no new signatures either. I I haven't been made aware of any new signatures. And then the only letter I received was from the Coastal Conservation League this evening at 10 after 5. And they do support the petition.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jenkins, you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Lisa, I have one, I have a question for Lisa. Lisa, in the planned development district, town, this project, you said townhouse is out, right? There would be no townhouse, right?
No, sir, we didn't say that. It could be a mix of use. It could be apartments, townhouses, which we call attached, single family residential. Or it could be single family detached residence, which is just a stick built home.
Okay, well, the reason why I asked that question, you talk about seven and a half unit per acre, right?
That's right.
Um, I, I, my mind go way back, but then we have something in the well, back then we called it the DSO that only certain amount of unit can go in an acre of land?
Well, we do in by right zoning. Well, we do in by right zoning. That's true. Um, that's why they're applying for a planned development district. The planned development district does allow for negotiations. A lot of it's based on what can you get on the um, land, you know, when you minus out your open space and your stormwater facilities and your roads and your setbacks and your buffers.
Well, um, you know, if, if we approve this, what guarantee we have? They won't stack too many units on one acre of land?
Um, overall, they would not be able to go beyond seven and a half, uh, units per acre.
That's, that's, that's a lot of unit on an acre of land, right?
Right. It is comparable to the CSP, um, planned development district that we approved, um, and that county council approved. And that master plan came to us just recently. So, um, and, and that's how we kind of came up with this number. We looked at what's been approved and we didn't feel that it should exceed seven and a half acres and that was keeping, um, in sync with more recent development, but we didn't feel it should go over that.
Okay. Um, my, my second question, Miss, to Miss Jennifer. Miss Jennifer, I know everybody who's listened to me on the planning commission, maybe say I sound like a broken record. But when it come to housing projects coming to, coming to Jasper County, my concern is low income. Now, I don't, I don't know what the price of these units going to be, but I do know the average income of people in Jasper County. I, I, you know, I know what they make and I'm concerned about a lot of times these units are coming and people who live here can't even get in one or can't afford. Has you put anything in place that will subsidize some of these housing for low income people?
We had talked about that, um, Mr. Jenkins at our last, when we came before you the last time. The, um, the painful truth to answer you as frankly as I can is for, for low income housing to be attractive to a developer, there has to be a density. Density makes up for a lot of cost. Um, I mean, it, it, for example, we have fixed costs that never change, whether we do ten houses or we do a thousand houses. There are things that have to be brought to the property, infrastructure cost. Typically, when you look at low income housing, you're looking at much higher density developments. Now, having said that, we feel where we are at seven and a half units per acre, that there will be an opportunity to consider roughly fifteen to twenty percent of whatever we do there as low income. If we do multifamily and townhome product there. Single-family homes would even further lower the density. And I, I want to make sure I, I express that to the commission that if we decide to go all single-family homes, you're not going to see anywhere near a hundred and eighty-nine homes in there. You'd be lucky to get a hundred and thirty on a good day. So, so, and that would push the price point up. So what we were hoping is that we would end up with a mixed product of single-family, possibly on the south side of the property and some townhomes towards the north. And within that townhome product, yes, we would be able to look at some low income subsidies, um, affordable housing options and, and take it from there. Uh, it's not a question that I can give you a definitive answer on until we actually get into a a site plan that is pretty more set in stone and what will be approved by staff at once we get to that level.
Well, you know, that's, that's music to my ear. I'm, uh, you know, I'm so glad to hear that and I thank you for that. My last question is to Lisa. Lisa, I noticed every time one of these projects come before us, we talk about the Department of Transportation in Columbia. Well, I know the funds come from Columbia, but are y'all in any discussion with our local department of transportation? You know, these people going to be the one maintaining these roads and it's coming. And you know, they have to be staff. Are y'all in contact with them and sitting down and talking to them, our local department of transportation? And letting them know what, you know, what's coming or what you think coming?
Yes, sir. They, um, have a local, um, engineer here who reviews the plans for every uh, single lock, commercial development and, uh, these proposed either subdivisions or PDDs. And just, I did want to mention, um, it was mentioned by a couple of you about highway one seventy and the traffic, and we do know that the traffic is awful. But in case you're not aware, the LATS committee, which is the Low Country Area Transportation Study, it's part of the Metropolitan Organization. Beaufort County is, um, they're in the MPO and part of Jasper County is the southern portion just because of its proximity. But I serve on the technical committee for Jasper County and we have already completed a traffic study, um, from the intersection of highway, along one seventy, from the intersection of highway two seventy-eight all the way to the intersection of highway four sixty-two. Um, we have recommendations and a plan to implement. We're having to, uh, we had to prioritize the list because can't do it all at once. And so Jasper County, the city of Hardyville and Beaufort County have worked on that. We've turned in all of our development plans when doing, um, when doing that study. And so we're, um, we've already committed some money along with, uh, Beaufort County and the city of Hardyville to begin to like implement that. So that is something we are doing to improve highway one seventy. It will take time. That doesn't get us up to the site, but that's a good portion of one seventy, again, from the two seventy-eight intersection to the highway four sixty-two intersection. Um, this area across at, um, Old Bailey Road and the PDD there, the center point PDD, that has been identified for a future traffic light. But so far, the count's not high enough for DOT to permit a traffic light there. It's probably going to come soon, but we're not quite there yet. So we are working on highway one seventy improvements. It does take time and it takes money. Um, so it is on the radar and, um, DOT also locally, uh, they review these traffic studies. That's something Jasper County requires the developer to make sure that they're getting DOT's comments on that. And another thing, you can't just tie in any type of development into one seventy. She'll need a South Carolina DOT encroachment permit on both Old Bailey Road and highway one seventy. So at the end of the day, um, DOT will have to permit that and they may say you have to put in these tra, um, these ingress and egress lanes and, and they'll have the say of what happens there and the mitigation. It'll be, it'll, uh, have to be performed at the cost of the developer.
Oh, well, okay. Thank you. But, um, Ms. Jennifer, I, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, what you say because the reason why I ask that question because I heard you talk about schools and teachers in the beginning and the average teachers in Jasper County cannot afford a three or four hundred thousand dollars ap- apartment. And I'm so glad to hear that you want to do all you can to make some of these apartments accessible to, you know, to low income earning. And the only concern I have about this project, Mr. Chairman, is that, that, that one acre land with seven and a half unit, uh, you know, I'm, I'm going to take Lisa's word and that is going to work out. And I, you know, Lisa, I thank you for that because I, that was my concern about being, you know, working with our local department of transportation and make sure that we going to have our ducks in order and the manpower to maintain these rules. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer.
Mr. Pinkney, you have any questions, comments? Mr. Pinkney?
I see he's on, but it doesn't look like he, I, I don't know what's going on. I don't know whether he's not, just can't hear or, or not. Doesn't appear to be muted, but, um, we'll move on and I'm, Lisa, I do have a couple of questions. One is um, if we approve this, uh, or send it forward with approval, um, would this come, this would be considered a master plan, um, a ma, a major subdivision?
So that
Come back before us.
It's either going to come back to you for a major subdivision or for a master plan, depending on what then use is. But yes, it will come back to you at another step.
Okay.
This is still just the rezoning.
Right. And we did, uh, send this forward with a approval to, uh, for county council uh, back in two, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two, right?
In May of twenty twenty-two.
With the higher density.
Yes.
So, uh, I really, I think the developer has answered most of our, if not all our questions and also tried to work with the neighborhood and and everyone to try to reduce the density. So with that being said, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Would I be able to share?
Letter, why don't you, uh, try to briefly either summarize it or go through it quickly?
Yes, sir, I will. Um, again, the letters from the Coastal Conservation League and, um, they do not support the development. Matter of fact, they say that they, they're supporting the over five hundred signees of the petition opposing the Bailey Park rezoning to PDD. The league stands firm in our position that Jasper County's base zoning standards exists for a reason and that residents should have a say in land use decisions that determine the future of their community. Article eight, one of the Jasper County zoning ordinance states the intent of a PDD is to encourage flexibility in the development of land to promote its most appropriate use and to do so in a manner that enhances public health, morals and general welfare. Unfortunately, rezoning to a PDD is often a strategy employed by developers to gain additional entitlements to a property, build at higher densities and maximize profits to the detriment of small established communities and public resources. That appears to be the case with Bailey Park. Notably, the proposed all residential PDD at seven and a half development unit per acre lacks the mixed juice component of a PDD that's mandated by state law. According to the comprehensive planned development and rural conservation areas should match the context of the existing landscape. At Bailey Park, the landscape is characterized by forest cover and one point seven acres of wetland. The property is also approximate to the Altima Hall Town Heritage Preserve, a half mile. The Conservation League urges the planning commission to consider an alternative concept plan for Bailey Park, which better matches the landscape's context. Additional goals set forth in the comprehensive master plan for development and rural conservation lands include preservation of key landscape features such as oaks, conservation focused subdivision designs and larger naturally landscape buffers. During a public hearing on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, residents voiced their concerns about stormwater runoff into the Okati River and the potential for this PDD to compound existing drainage problems. Additionally, the sonst of Okati River headwaters are east of the property and any development here will have ripple effects that flow directly to this waterway. The river's decline in health has been well documented and studied. The Okati is under, is currently under a set of total maximum daily load regulations to attempt to slow this decline and improve its health in the future. Converting natural land cover to impervious surfaces increase the stormwater runoff, which transports fecal coliform bacteria, pet waste, fertilizers and other pollutants into our water, waterways. On average, fifteen percent of water that falls on impervious surfaces results in runoff, while ninety percent of water that falls on impervious surfaces generate runoff. Additionally, scientific research of our title creek systems has documented that adverse changes in the physical and chemical environmental occur when impervious areas in a watershed reach ten to twenty percent. Ecological processes are impaired when impervious areas exceed twenty to thirty percent. These data points underscore why Jasper County urgently needs to adopt the regional Southern Low Country Stormwater Design Manual prior to approving the Bailey Park rezoning and concept plan. Additionally, the Conservation League encourages the use of low impact development stormwater practices to the maximum extent possible to reduce the acreage required for stormwater ponds. The Jasper County Stormwater Management Design Manual also recommends LID practices to beat flow reduction and pollution removal. That's true. And we implement that with every site plan. You have to meet so many of those. Uh, currently over nineteen hundred stormwater ponds in Southern Port Royal Sound watershed makeup over square, five square miles land cover. These stormwater ponds are often kept full and managed as amenities rather than fulfilling their purpose to capture and mitigate pollution. Low impact development methods such as bio swells and bi retention can be less expensive than traditional stormwater design, can handle capacity from large storm events, can be incorporated into small spaces such as on the fringes of lots and can add valuable aesthetics to a community. This form of stormwater design not only addresses flood management, but also better protects water quality in the basin compared to stormwater retention ponds. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, the Conservation League supports a joint study on growth proposed between Jasper County and the town of Richland. We advise the planning commission to press pause on all new development applications until the study is complete. We understand the scope of this study is being finalized, but that its purview will consider the fiscal impacts of development in the region. The results can and should be factored into the planning commission's decision regarding the Bailey Park rezoning and concept plan and future applications.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Miss, I seen Mr. Pinkney light up there for a second. I'm going to give him a chance if he has any comments or questions.
Uh, yeah, um, from changing it to a planned development from the by right zoning, it's a plus for the community because it gives the planning commission, county council and everybody a chance to have a say in what they develop. If by by right zoning is not determined what it should look like and what kind of product is going to be there. So I think our planned development and them reducing the density is a plus. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Any other, uh, questions or comments from any of the councilmen or, excuse me, uh, committee men?
I have a question, um, Mr. Wade. Lisa, can, uh, do I have the floor?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Lisa, um, can you tell us who this, um, group is that sent the letter? I'm not familiar with them.
Um, it's the Coastal Conservation League. Um, they have an office in Charleston, Columbia, Beaufort and, uh, Grow Food Carolina. Never heard them. They have been around for a long time and they, this actually came from Grant McClure, who's the South Coast Project Manager. But they work to conserve land and, um, just like, we have a lot of different groups here in the Low Country.
Is it a private group or is it a government gr, um, group or?
I would say, uh, they're not really a private group, I don't think. I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that.
I just don't know. And I have another question. Um, the traffic study um, does not take into consideration the other projects that are approved in this area. Is that correct? That have not already begun development. Is that correct?
The traffic study, um, does include anyone who already has entitlements like the center point PDD or any one that, um, any of the tracts of land that have permits. So it does not include, uh, properties that might just be coming online that don't have any entitlements or permits.
Including the one across the road from this development that we recently approved.
They do have entitlements. You know, that master plan that we looked at for the apartments, that considered basically everything that is online and it considered all, you know, what's allowed in the center point. But in that case, it didn't consider Bailey Park because Bailey Park did not have any entitlements and they don't have a permit. So.
Okay. Last question. In order to further reduce the density, how could that be accomplished?
How to further reduce the density? In order to accomplish that, I mean, we would have to work with the developer to reduce, you know, to see if they're, that's something they would be interested in doing.
And changing the zoning would, would not, there would be no advantage to those who wish to reduce the density by keeping the zoning as is. Is that correct?
If they wanted to come in for a single-family residential development, it would reduce the density. If they came in with, let's say they decided just to do the twenty acres and they wanted to do it at a town home development, then the density, again, it's based on two thousand square feet. So I'm gonna guess that density would be about two hundred townhouses, something like that. I'd have to do the math to know exactly what that comes to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, just one short question. Am I in order?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Lisa, I noticed you say you just got this letter this afternoon, right?
Yes, at ten after five.
Yeah. And when you read that letter, I was listening to a lot of concerns and a lot of flaws they listed against this project from the Coastal Service League. Has, I used to be asking, because that's a dumb question. Do you think our county attorney should see this letter and discuss some of the things that they said in this letter with you?
The county administrator and two of the, and two of the council members were copied on this letter. So they, whether they've had time to see it, they will see it.
I was just concerned because I would just hand some of the stuff you read that they, that they quoted that was, that was against what we were doing, what was not legal. And that was just my question. I know you didn't have time to do it.
Sure. But they, but they are proposing a mixed housing product. So, you know, it's not illegal.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It's no different than CSP. And then I think they're probably not quite really familiar with what we will require at stormwater. But again, it's really an interpretation of the comprehensive plan. And Ms. Butler, you asked me who, Dr. Butler, you asked who the Conservation League is. I know they have been around, I've been with the county twenty-three and a half years and they have been around all of that time, but I'm just looked them up online. It says the South Coast Region includes Collidum, Buford, Jasper, and Hampton Counties, and that they work to protect the health of the natural resources of the South Carolina coastal plain. There, and I also see like there's a way to, way to give. So they're probably a nonprofit agency.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for following up.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Okay, well, thank, thank you, Lisa, because I know, well, the county council had a turn of time now to see this letter and he hadn't called you. So I'm quite sure it's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wade.
Yes, Mr. Pinkney.
Even what, even what we proposed this afternoon, in favor or not in favor, it's just a recommendation to the council. And even if it get approved, it will come back to us as a major subdivision. We'll get another chance to look at it and have input. I know about four miles from this, where this is, it was proposed for another trash dump. Not one person came out and opposed that trash dump. But we turned it down. Now, these folks is trying to build a real nice subdivision, major subdivision, and they're against it. And that dump site would have been very, very close to the coastal waters. The coastal lead did not say one word. So I'm a little bit baffled. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
You're moving what? I'm sorry. You're approving or disapproving or what? I mean, I'm not.
You asked him for a motion to approve the conceptual plan to be sent back to the county council.
There you go. Okay.
That's my motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
I've stuck it at Alex Pink.
All right. Well, Mr. Art actually lifted his hand first, but he's muted. So. All right. I have a motion on the floor. Any other questions or comments?
I don't know, Mr. Wade, this is Deborah Butler.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say this at this point, but I will anyway, and you can, you can correct me. I will be voting against this for my concern regarding the traffic in the area and the unanswered questions regarding the threat to the environment. And I would like that noted in the minutes, Lisa, because, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Wade.
All right. A motion is on the floor and is properly seconded. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the, let the record show that Ms. Butler raised her hand. And Ms. Ferguson raised her hand. Sorry, Ms. Ferguson. All right. Let's move on to the next order of business. Open discussion. Anyone have anything that they want to say?
I did.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah. Lisa gave us some statistics on the on the code and compliance stats. I mean, it's, it's just numbers. It doesn't really give us any information.
I agree with that.
So I was just wondering if they can expound on this a little bit more and give us a little more detail about, you know, what kind of civilian complaints did you receive? What kind of inspections did you do that caused reinspection? What kind of violations were they? You know, I think we should ask for a little more information than just numbers.
This is the report that they turn in to the administrator and that the county, that the code enforcement turns into his supervisor, who's Chief Wells, but I can pass that along.
Yeah, it would be interesting to me to know how much this tells Chief Wells, except for the fact that he might be working, that the code enforcer might be working.
So you just wanna know what kind of complaints and what kind of new inspection?
It should be a little more detailed.
I agree with that, Ms. Ferguson.
Anyone else have anything else?
I have, I have just a comment for Lisa. And I know, I know that this position is no longer under your direct supervision, but, you know, there's a case back from, I don't know how many years ago, that has been ongoing and I was told that they just eventually dropped it. And I think you know who I'm talking about. I don't wanna get into specifics because this was started before I was on the planning commission. And I mean, nothing has ever been done about this situation. And I don't see anything on here that would indicate that it's still, I mean, that anything will ever be done about some of these cases. And, you know, what, what do you suggest we do, Lisa, as the administrator of the department? I know you're not his supervisor, but what?
Yeah. And I was pretty much told to forward all, everything over to him. I've given them, we had an Excel sheet of all the violations we had noted and had sent letters to, and I sent a template of every letter I had, I sent. So, but I've basically been told not to respond to all my, I mean, it's.
Well, folks are used to, I guess, going to the, to your office with complaints. I'm sure you still get a lot of them. What, what are, I mean, people, I understand apathy because they've been complaining for years and nothing is ever done about it. And so what do we tell these folks who have concerns? I used to tell them.
To call the code enforcement officer.
And that's resulted in no difference.
I mean, he has a supervisor that you could call.
Okay.
That's, that's.
More the same. Yeah, I know. I know it's not your problem, but.
And that one particular case that I think you're talking about, I mean, we were waiting on a judge to bring that back to court and she didn't, and I think she wasn't willing to, you know, based on other circumstances around it.
I, it's just incredible to me. I mean, it gives no credibility to the codes that are enforced if, that are on the books if they're never enforced. You can do what you please and it doesn't matter. So anyway, all right, that was my two cents. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything that they would like to share or comment on?
I'd just like to say we have to pay attention. Jasper County is on the rise of a lot of growth. And when we reviewed a conference plan for the five-year review, if some areas is very sensitive, we need to make sure we be there to indicate that. And once investors have invested money, is not try to beat them down. Because I was in Buford this afternoon, and I mean, they got several huge product, projects that's being developed. And we just need to plan smart and be smart planners, allow development and allow Jasper County to grow to a beautiful place and be very sensitive to the sensitive areas.
Could, can I say something in response to that, Mr. Wade?
Yes, Dr. Butler, plug it up, please.
You know, I totally agree with that, but here's the, here's, here's the situation. I know that because poor people, they have to have more of them crowded in the area to be able to lower the cost of the houses. But if you go into some of these, and Buford, and the one I'm talking about is in Buford County, these people are packed in there. They don't have room to park their cars. Do we really have to allow that kind of development? Can't people who are at the lower ends of the economic spectrum have decent places to live with places to park their cars, enough yard for their children to play in? I mean, have to approve that? I think that's wrong-headed.
But I think that's what.
Everybody deserves a decent place to live. And I don't go for increasing density to lower house price. I'm sorry. I know that somebody's gotta pay for that, but we gotta do better. The places that I looked at in Buford County, it is sad. And I don't want that for Jasper County. That's not what I want. But anyway.
That's exactly one reason we asked the developer to cut back on this density because we didn't want it to be as dense as what you see in Bluffton and Buford County.
It's terrible. It is. If you go at night when those people are home from work and most people have, their family, they usually have two cars, there's no place to park their cars. And God forbid they have somebody come over to visit. I mean, it, it's bad, guys. I mean, you should take a wander over there if you haven't seen it. We can do better in Jasper County for our peoples. We can do better. But anyway, thank you. That was it.
I think that's what Mr. Pinkney is alluding to, that, that we're not gonna stop the growth, but we need to control it. And by controlling it, we can actually make it a better place. I believe that, that's our job as the commission. Again, we're not going to stop the growth. The growth is gonna come, whether we like it or not. And in this instance, they could have made the front track commercial, which would have been even worse traffic. You know, they at least are working with the community and to lower the density. They were working with their neighbors. You know, they, they've listened. They didn't just, well, you're either gonna do it my way or no way. So I believe that they really tried to, to listen to the community and do the right thing.
I think we have to thank the council for that because they did not vote on the, on the project or move it forward, which they could have done.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Well, let me say something to that as well. You know, it's not, it's not really the council, it's the people that spoke. When the people come, step to the plate and speak to what's happening in their community, the county council responds. The county council did not take the action. They took the action as a result of the public coming together and speaking up. And that's the case with just about anything.
That's true.
People speak, things change. But if they don't speak in a lot of your low-income communities, people don't come out and speak. And what happens? Everything gets dumped in that community. So if you had these same people in low-income areas in this community, this would have been full speed ahead.
Well, but that's our responsibility.
To get up and speak.
Ms. Ferguson, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jenkins.
Would you give me a minute? Ms. Ferguson is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wade. I was trying to get myself off of mute.
Okay. Did you have anything? I see you got your hand up. Do you have anything to add?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've been on a commission for a long time. We talk about growth. The only growth we is getting in the Jasper County is housing. I mean, we need to bring industry. We talk about schools. We need, we need industry. You talk about Buford County. They're building malls. They're bringing jobs. But, you know, we have a long way to go. Every time something come before this planning commission, it's a housing project. There's no industry. There's no jobs.
I don't totally agree with that, Mr. Jenkins. The county does a good job of trying to develop that industrial park. They build buildings to sell to try to get more industry into the, into Jasper County. So I think that the county does a good job of that.
You know, that's not what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm, I'm fine. We have all been a part of that. But we, we need to bring new industry and show the old industry here doing fine. But we, we need to bring some bigger and better things. Yeah. Yeah. I'm not, I'm not knocking, I'm not knocking that. That, that, that is fine, but I'm talking about, you know, something further ahead. We need to look forward to bringing, you know, to bring a tax base to this county so we can do a lot of stuff. But what we have now is fine. I'm not knocking that. I agree with you there. Thank you.
Well, I believe, didn't they?
One other thing, Mr. Wade.
Lisa, didn't they sell the, the building that they had in the industrial park?
It is sold. We can't say any more than that, but an announcement will be coming soon. Just keep tuned to county council. It'll be announced either, maybe not the next council, but within the next few council meetings. And then hopefully they'll be looking to build a new one.
Dr. Bostick, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah. I wanted to say, you know, I've been around a while and that probably helped coin this phrase. Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, I've been around a while and I probably helped coin this phrase. And I see it now. It says, let's keep Jasper County rural. Now, way back when, that might have been what we wanted to do because we didn't have an opportunity to grow. I think that I think we need to do a little tweaking to that. Because we, back during my day, we had more pine trees than we had people, and we didn't have a voice up in Columbia. So when you get more people to 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 demand to demand certain things, you will get more resources coming into Jasper County. So I want to keep Jasper County rural, but, you know, we're not going to just have thousands and thousands of acres like we had at one time unless we put them in some sort of reserve or trusts, you know?
And we're working on that too, Dr. Bostic.
We need to that that phrase is, we need to work on that phrase, but I think a lot of people are saying, hey, look, we want the thousands and thousands acres that we used to have for recreation and hunting and fishing and all that stuff. You know, if you have that, that's great. When you start talking about farmland and the taxes it pays, two dollars and something an acre, that's why we could never get anything for the school system because two dollars and something an acre, at least when you're doing a development, you you're getting more resources coming into the county. And these poor people that we're talking about, hopefully, they will be able to gain some type of income from what's happening, rather than just cutting grass and 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 doing stuff like that and working on the farm, not the farm, but in the timber industry or whatever. So we got to, we got to do it smart, but we we need development. We need commercial involvement, industry, and we also, you know, residential is fine. We just have to make sure that we keep these, you know, try to try to make everything work together and not forsake one for the other, because then nobody wins.
That's exactly my point, Dr. Bostic. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day.
Say to you too.
And we'll see you in a month.
Yes.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.